Are we doing an audio test?
Hello. Yeah, Denise, you're in the wrong session. You need to be in the in the executive session, which is a different Zoom meeting. And then when that's over, you'll join this one.
Hello. Yeah, Denise, you're in the wrong session. You need to be in the
Hello. Yeah, Denise, you're in the wrong session. You need to be in the
Lane County College Board of Education Special Meeting will now be called to order. Celia, will you please call the roll?
Kevin Alltucker?
Here.
Denise Diamond? Austin Fullnagy?
Here, here, here.
Steve Mattel?
Here.
Zach Malholland?
Here.
Julie Weisman? Having just a little too much fun.
Yeah. Check, check. Okay.
Well, mine's completely off.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry.
And Denise?
He just didn't echo.
Denise is not here.
Okay.
I thought she was on already.
She's been having a technical.
Okay, let's just give us, why don't we go ahead and do the land recognition for this meeting will be done by Shane Turner. Shane, will you please provide the recognition?
I'd like to start our meeting with acknowledgement that the land that we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapulia people. The Kalapulia were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapulia.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Is the audio like, okay, there was a switch just made in the room?
Yeah, the audio seems to be better now.
Okay. Excellent.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Perfect. We'll be moving on to the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to ask that we move, excuse me, the naming of the Health Professions Plaza to the beginning of the agenda. Without objection, can we get a vote back mission on favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. I'd like us to do any questions or comments on the, to the responses to information requests? No question. Okay, seeing none. Unfortunately, our sixth board member is having some technical difficulties and is not online yet. I wonder if we can wait two or three minutes before starting the first interview in order to allow them to get here?
We just decided to move forward with the.
Oh, I'm sorry. The next item on the agenda is the Health Professions Plaza.
And she doesn't have to read her.
Yes, Brett, we are delighted, absolutely delighted to bring this to the board. The board might be aware that we have a policy on naming. And we are bringing an opportunity for that this evening, and we could not be more excited about that. I asked Brett to lead this effort and right now he's going to give you information about this opportunity that we have here at Lane.
I thank you, President Bulger, members of the board. It's my honor this evening to be here on behalf of, well, what we call ourself, the Margaret Hamilton Naming Committee. And as you may or may not be aware, the college has a pretty long history of acknowledging past presidents who have served the institution and have named various landmarks at the institution from the Mary Spieldy Downtown Center to the Moskowitz Courtyard, the Gagne Terrace, Eldon Shafer Drive, Parnell Loop, and on and on. And so it is kind of in that spirit that the committee brings forth to you this evening a recommendation to name the new plaza outside of the Health Professions Building in honor of President Emeritus Margaret Hamilton, who was our former president. Most of you had the opportunity to serve with Marge. We gave it a lot of thought as to what would be an appropriate space on campus. And as you're, may or may not be aware, Marge was a nurse in her profession before she entered higher education. And if you, you know, if you had to pick the perfect president to get you through a pandemic, it would probably be a nurse. And so she was our president through, through most of COVID. And at the same time was a champion for the 2020 bond that passed. And one of the projects that was funded through that bond that passed in 2020 was the Health Professions Building that just finished up next to the gym. And so we thought there was, you know, we couldn't think of anything better to name after Marge Hamilton than a plaza outside the Health Professions Building in the spirit of her career of education and health. And also with, with her support for the bond passing in 2020. And so you'll see in the packet this evening, we included some photographs that show you where the plaza is. It's right at the bottom of the bridge. If you were walking from this side of campus out towards the Health Professions Building on the right-hand side. And so that is our recommendation tonight. It's just an information item on the agenda. With your support, we'd love to bring it back in January for action.
Yeah. Austin Fullnagy? Yeah, thank you for the clarification that this is the information I am not an action item tonight. Thank you so much. And yeah, I am in full, full, full support of this moving forward as an action item in our January meeting.
Thank you. I'm, yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Only that very classy move, I'm sure you had a lot to do with it, Brett. Good job.
Okay. Anything else on this item? Okay.
I can keep going. No. So Brett, noise decibels, I'm just kidding. How big is the plaza?
You're bringing back some PTSD from my UFO days.
Yeah.
If you have an event outside, there's someone standing with a decibel reader right next to you the whole time.
Yeah. Just gonna let our candidate know that for a minute or two later.
Just gonna let our candidate know that for a minute or two later.
That use, 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 can you? You go first, you go first. Thanks, Steve.
Three of them sitting there, I just announced to them we're late for because and.
Yep.
What did you do? You have a twin, brother or sister? Brother. She don't see him super often.
Re- refresh your email. It's like, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta get up and take that, I know, yeah. Yeah, you can take the call. It's either gonna be that or it's something real bad, yeah.
I, I assume we didn't lose Kevin.
Nope, I'm here.
Good, good stuff, okay. Just wanna make sure.
Not to show people who are, uh, have no video.
There we go. Good stuff.
Shouldn't there be a, like a, a web-based link that, that, that kind of circumvents the whole need for the?
Yeah, click on that, click join.
That just pop up.
I didn't, I didn't look at see. It's my whole brother.
2020, how excited I was first started using.
Oh, yeah, I bet. Mm-hmm. Uh, yep. Yeah, by the time I got on the board, though, it was like, I felt like it was a, well, it was a well-run system. I just showed up. Yeah. It's great.
We two at the panel. If there would be public out page, if it ran into the backroom, it's based on soon. That's what it's today.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's the, it's the. Are you crazy? Are you like, you're my image on the mountain? She, and so I had to flip the, the background so that it'd show up. And then I did this on our six week meeting. Was flipped again because, because it's a picture of us on them. Zoomed and reversed it, so it was like.
Yeah.
Was it, it did the trail map of it?
Excellent. Great.
Okay. Good to go.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Apologies for the technical difficulties. We will now move on to interviews for the Zone Seven at-large vacancy on the LCC Board of Education. Each candidate will be given 20 minutes to respond to the questions. At the conclusion of the interviews, the board will recess for 10 minutes, uh, 10-minute break before deliberation and voting. Uh, Denise and Kevin, uh, Kevin, I'm gonna ask you if you could, uh, ask question number five? And Denise, if you could ask question number six?
Got it.
Thank you. Uh, well, uh, can we invite in our first candidate? And the first candidate is gonna be Jim Arnold.
Please enter. Thanks.
Hello, Jim.
Hi there.
Thank you for coming tonight to speak with us.
You bet.
Uh, my name's Zach Malholland, the board chair. Uh, so we've got seven questions for you this evening, so we're gonna do a little round robin, uh, starting with Austin. We'll each ask you one question. Uh, the five of us here, or sorry, the four of us here and, and two online.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, you have 20 minutes total for the interview. So you have about three minutes per question, and the last question will just take one minute, so.
Right.
Uh, we'll get started.
I've, I've gotten notice, I, I wanted to make sure I didn't ramble and stayed within my time limit.
All right. Okay, well, with that, we'll get started.
Excellent, thank you, welcome. Um, question number one, why are you interested in serving on the Lane Community College Board of Education? And what personal, professional, and volunteer experiences do you have that have prepared you for the role, uh, for a role on the LCC Board?
I've been a resident of Oregon since 1970. I moved here to go to grad school at OSU. I ultimately moved to Lane County in Eugene, um, to take a job with the Oregon University System Chancellor's Office in 1995. Uh, so I've been, um, in the last 30 years, I've lived 20 years, 20 of those years here in Lane County and consider this my home. I have a real interest in and commitment to this community and, um, Lane County and LCC. I've served in many roles in colleges and universities, um, in Oregon, and I believe I could offer a unique and educated perspective on the issues that this board considers. And, um, I think this is finally my time to pursue this as a capstone to my career in higher education. I wanna be involved, I wanna be of service, and I hope you all agree that this is a good fit for me at this time in my life and what I wanna do here. In terms of my experience that leads me here, um, I know higher education very well. I know Oregon higher education especially well. My academic credentials include a PhD in higher education from Indiana University. I was employed by the, um, Oregon University System Chancellor's Office as Director of Community College Articulation. Um, I was during those years with the Chancellor's Office, I was the liaison from the university system to the community colleges in the state. So I worked with all of the public institutions in the state and some of the privates. Um, and I worked with both boards. I worked with the Board of Higher Education, I worked with the, on Board of Education. And I worked collaboratively with, uh, with community college staff at all levels, from the president to academic advisors. I worked the gamut. Um, mostly on matters of, uh, student transfer and, um, program articulation, but I, I was a troubleshooter in lots of areas. Um, then after the Chancellor's Office experience, I was employed as a academic dean at three community colleges, um, for some period of time, two, two of those colleges here in Oregon and one college in, um, in California. In those, um, positions, I was a budget manager and supervisor of faculty and staff. I, I hired faculty, I prepared class schedules, I responded to student interests, needs and complaints and a whole bunch of other duties. And I've served here at, at Lane and at the ground level as a, as a part-time faculty member and part-time classified staff. I served one year as, uh, the VP for Part-Time Faculty, um, for LCE, LCEA. And one, and one of those years also as a member of the Budget Development Subcommittee here at, at LCC. So in some, I know higher education, Oregon higher education especially well, and, um, I would really like to put all of this to service here on this board.
Thank you. Next question, uh, one of the board's responsibilities is to plan for the future of the college. What are the biggest challenges facing LCC and how would you try to solve them? What do you believe are the major opportunities?
Well, there's lots of challenges that have caught my attention, and I'll, I'll list a few of them. I made a list. Um, challenge number one, um, of course, is the budget, um, and financial stability of the institution. Budget issues have always been a factor in Oregon higher education ever since the passage of Measure Five back in 1990, which limited property taxes and base, and fundamentally changed the way, um, schools were funded at all levels. And as a member of the Budget Development Subcommittee here at, at LCC, I think I have some level of understanding of the budget challenges here on this campus. The, uh, second challenge is the cost of tuition, which is related, of course, to budget. Um, it's a, a barrier to students, um, it can limit access, affect the student experience and impact enrollment. Challenge number three is the low morale on campus. I know this firsthand as I've been a part-time, uh, classified and part-time faculty member here. Um, I think probably you have some sense of this, um, as you've been listening to the public comments that have come before the board. Challenge number four is poor labor relations. For example, it's evidenced by the, um, the, uh, controversy and the strife over the minimum qualifications and the ABSE and ESL departments. Um, the increasing number of grievances on the campus and the, um, the, uh, legal, increased legal costs that have been occurred here, um, as a result. Uh, challenge number five is the low level of resources devoted to mental health needs for our students on campus. I come from the part-time faculty bank, banks and counseling, and, um, I have some firsthand, firsthand, um, familiarity with this issue. And challenge six that I've listed is basically sort of related to morale. It's the administration's approach towards shared governance and the discord that has created. Um, let me take a drink. In terms of trying to solve these issues, well, that's not actually the language I necessarily use. I certainly would love to work collaboratively with you all to, um, to wrestle with these issues and, um, and, and make this a collective effort in, in terms of, um, what we can do here. In terms of approaching issues, it's, um, I sort of approach this as I would in academic. I, I think it's a matter of asking the right questions. Um, I like to ask questions and try to figure things out. And, um, I think the, uh, the, the better the questions, the better the understanding of any problem, and the easier it is for answers to emerge. Um, the opportunities that I've listed here is as the governing board, we would have the opportunity to provide the leadership that will help make LCC as healthy an institution as it possibly can be. And we have the opportunity to encourage and support the administration's work to enhance morale by improving labor relations.
Thank you. Is it possible for him to see the clock? Uh, just so you know, you have about a little under 13 minutes left. Uh, Steve, go ahead.
Hi there, Jim. I don't, yeah, I don't see a clock.
I do.
Oh, boy.
Hi there, Jim. I'm Steve Mattel, I'm, uh, representing, um, the South Gene area. So, and I'm asking question number three, the majority of students at LCC recently shifted from being mostly transfer-seeking students to a majority of students now pursuing degrees in career technical education. Uh, what do you think Lane Community College's role should be in meeting the community's workforce development needs?
I'm gonna have to abbreviate my answers, right? Um, I, I think, um, I'm gonna skip right down to the last, latter part of this answer that I've got written out here is I actually think LCC is already the place that the community looks for its workforce development needs, given our career technical associate degrees as well as other programs such as career pathways that provide, um, short-term, um, trainings and certificates. So perhaps we can continue to, um, get the word out about our already successful efforts here. And, and especially the new ITech Building, which is bond-funded, I Profile, something the voters have approved here. It's a new facility that we should certainly showcase for the recruitment of students and faculty into the career technical fields that we offer here. Looking at the clock.
Okay, Julie.
Uh, question number four. I'm Julie, um, Weisman. Diversity, equity and inclusion is an important pillar of the LCC's mission. What is your experience working on these issues? How do you see, um, equity initiatives, uh, and efforts supporting the success of LCC students?
Well, I see DEI as a philosophy and a value system to which I subscribe and, um, as, as well as a set of policies and practices that can be implemented. Um, I was probably involved with DEI before that term even existed in terms of, uh, working in, um, programs that were very diverse in terms of their populations. Such as, uh, I was a director of a federally funded trio program on the Western Oregon University Campus. Probably the most recent example of my involvement in something that would be, um, the, of a DEI orientation would be my, um, position as a dean and hiring faculty. Um, I was a dean over science and, uh, technology and, and math areas, and I was able to hire, uh, women into fields that are typically male-dominated. So, um, and I, I just wanted to say, as long as we're talking about DEI, I'm aware of the diversity of value statements on the LCC website and, um, and I, and I support all of those. But it occurs to me that on this campus, we probably have more work to do in this area. Um, in fact, it's likely one of our major challenges, one that I neglected to answer back in question two. For example, I'm, um, aware of the process of consultants coming to campus to investigate a racial discrimination complaint against faculty, counselors of color, and the perception of retaliation against those complainants. And I, I know, um, that, um, on the survey of, um, of Gallup survey that, um, asked the question of everybody at this institution is treated fairly regardless, regardless of individual differences, et cetera. LCC scored in the eighth percentile nationally, which I view as problematic. So while I, I support totally the values espoused on our website regarding DEI, I'm thinking perhaps that we have, uh, a ways to go in, in, in acting those values here.
Kevin?
Jim, hi, my name's Kevin Alltucker. I have one of the at-large positions on the board.
Yeah, hi.
Lane County and the city of Eugene have climate action plans, and LCC was a stakeholder in developing these plans. How can community colleges lead in modeling sustainable practices and training the next generation of clean energy workers?
Um, the previous campus that I worked at was actually very green, green oriented, and I, um, I worked on projects there that, um, would point to that. I, um, I worked, um, on, uh, a couple of bond-funded improvements to campus. I, um, worked on a PE building that was remodeled, that included a parking lot that had chargers for EVs and, um, canopies that so, had solar panels on top. I was, um, the administrator that was most directly involved in, uh, building a science, math and nursing facility that, um, I, uh, went through the, from the architectural stage, um, to the ribbon cutting that came in at LEED Gold Certified. And I'm, I'm aware that we have, um, similar buildings on campus here. I'm aware that the center building on campus here is, I believe, um, LEED Silver Certified, I think. And the, um, the downtown center, I think, is LEED Platinum. So in terms of, um, what we're doing here, I think we're, we're setting an example. Uh, we have charging stations in the parking lot outside, and as far as academics, we have two associative, uh, two associate degrees, um, one in energy management and building controls technology, and, uh, one is sustainability coordinator. So given these facts, it would seem that we're modeling sustainable practice here, practices here to our infrastructure and also our academic. to our infrastructure and also our academic offerings.
Okay, Denise?
Hi, Jim. I'm Denise, speaking to you from Florence. Number six, what would be your top three priorities if you served on the LCC Board?
Well, first of all, my overall goal in joining the board would first to be to learn the culture of the board, find my place in fitting in, and just leading the lay of the land. I would sort of use the advice of a very well-known former University of Oregon anthropology professor who advised a person entering a new culture to talk a little and listen a lot. So that would be my primary goal entering. But in terms of my priorities on the board, priority one would be to provide a sense of leadership on the board that would lead to enhanced morale by letting faculty and staff here know that we have their backs. Priority two would be do what I can do as a board member to advocate for better labor relations on campus, which works on both the issues of morale and the budget. And priority three would be to do what I can as a board member to advocate for enhanced mental health services here on campus for our students.
Excellent. I got the last question, number seven. If selected by the board, do you plan to run for reelection to this position in 2025?
Yes, and I would hope to win so I could continue to be on the board and offer some continuity and stability here. Of the very few people I've talked to about this, that I was actually engaged in talking to you tonight about the possibility of joining the board, I know I have probably at least six votes out there that I could gather for running for election.
Okay, well, we ended up getting you to rush, and now you've got about four minutes left. Is there anything else for you like that?
Yeah, I know some stuff that I wanted to get to, but it's gonna be hard, would be hard to go back to that. I guess in terms of a summary statement, maybe?
Yeah.
I believe I have the background and probably a unique set of skills and experience that would allow me to fit in rapidly as possible and be a productive board member. I hope I've made the case for that. I ask you for your support. I appreciate this a lot.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna give everybody about two or three minutes just to write up any notes that you may have after that first interview, and then we'll be bringing in the next candidate. Which will be Jesse Maldonado.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry, sorry. Yep, busted. Just trying to read the text message. My brother. I still...
Hey, Zach, I don't know if you can hear me, but it appears that the camera is frozen in the conference room.
Kevin, can you hear me?
I can.
Maybe text media services.
Yeah. They, they, we just lost them, so...
Yeah, they know. I normally don't speak to you guys during the meeting, but yeah, I noticed that too. They dropped out, so...
They did drop out. I wonder if they will be back.
Oh, they're there, yep.
We're back.
Excellent.
And we're echoing.
It's not one thing, it's another.
Yeah. Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Are we still echoing? Oh, good.
No, sound good.
Sound good, all right. Apologies to those watching online, had some technical difficulties, lost Zoom for a minute. We are back to our Lane Community College Board of Education Special Meeting, interviewing candidates to fill these zone seven at-large vacancies. The next candidate up for an interview is Jesse Maldonado. Can you please call Jesse in? Hi, Jesse. I'm Zach Mulhall, and I'm the board chair. Thank you for coming and speaking with us tonight. So we're gonna do a round robin of questions, so we'll start here and we'll just work our way down here. So four here and two online will ask you questions. So seven questions in total. The six are the first six questions, about three minutes each, and then about one minute for the last question.
Perfect.
So with that, we will get right into it.
Excellent. Hi there. Austin Fulniggy, represent East, represent East Lane County. Why are you interested in serving on the Lane Community College Board of Education? What personal, professional, and volunteer experience do you have that prepared you for a role on the LCC Board?
Great. Well, first off, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here. As somebody who used to serve in government, I know that the job that you're doing is a very thankless job, so let me be somebody that thanks you. I know you're missing a lot of family events or other commitments for being here, and so thank you for doing that and the opportunity to be here. And really excited to tell you a little bit more about myself. So, one of the most important things I feel a community can do is provide affordable and quality education for its citizens. I was very lucky to go to a small state school in my backyard in my hometown. Enrollment was less than LCC actually has. So, one of the things I really cherished about that was I wasn't just a seven-digit number, right? I was a name to my classmates, to my professors, to the faculty on campus. So I really did enjoy that, and I think that LCC provides that opportunity to folks here in Lane County and beyond as well. So, I really appreciated that. And the reason why I got very interested in this is recently I moved to Eugene. I graduated last year with my master's in public administration. And during my time getting my master's degree, I was very lucky to teach as a grad assistant, intro to public policy, and really found a passion for teaching all 150 students that I had over the course of two years. And really became passionate about education and seeing students interact and challenge themselves and challenge each other and challenge me. It was very inspiring. So, that actually led me to, in three weeks, I'm gonna walk into a classroom of 150 students as an adjunct professor for the second time. They let me teach that class now at the university, which was not something I expected to ever be an adjunct professor, but it's really pushed my passion for education. So, really enjoyed that, and it's really pushed my passion for service. It's intro to public policy, and I really like to teach students about local government and boards like this that they might not have received earlier on in their life. And I'll talk about a lot of my experiences, as you know from reading what I provided to the board. I was elected at 18 to city council in my hometown and got to serve my community for four years. It was really a passion of mine to take on government. I really enjoyed the minutia. Budgeting became something I actually enjoyed, which I never thought I'd say, especially as an 18-year-old. So, I really love service contributing in the community. I would love to be a member of this board. When I first moved to Eugene, within a year, I ended up actually on the Eugene Parks Foundation with Kevin, and got to help them run their bond and provide a little bit of support for the parks in this community because I want to call this place home. And, yeah, I'm just really excited about this opportunity, so...
Thank you.
I want to stay on time for you guys.
One of the board's responsibilities is to plan for the future of the college. What are the biggest challenges facing LCC and how would you try to solve them? What do you believe are the major opportunities?
Sure. I think the number one challenge, and it's no shock to anybody here, is financial stability and sustainability of the college. You know, funding is always an uphill battle. It's always an issue. We know that the, there could be some uphill battles with the federal government and funding in the next few years. That could become an issue. We know that the governor's budget doesn't call for all of the funding that community colleges asked for this year, and there's an opportunity for us to get creative and work with state legislators to lobby on our behalf to ensure that we get more funding because we're providing a very great service here with the college. So, I also think that a major challenge is enrollment, keeping the trend positive, right? Typically, when you have employment that's low, college enrollment dips. We have a positive trend line at LCC. That's a good, good place to be. So keeping that trend line positive, I think, is a necessary part of this board. So that's a challenge, but I also think retaining staff and faculty, obviously, that is a big piece of the job of the board too, ensuring that our students have folks to teach them and be on campus. So, it's major opportunities. Hispanic-serving institution is something, as a Latino, I think would be great to focus on. Getting to that 25% threshold of students on this campus being Hispanic or Latino, I think, is very important. And there's no Hispanic-serving institutions in Oregon, so why not, why not be the first, right? I also think one of the greatest opportunities is the fact that voters just four years ago passed a bond in support of LCC at 50% threshold. You know, asking for $121.5 million is a no small ask. And to get such a positive response, folks trust this institution and they want to support it. So, I think that if we can show them that we're continuing to use their money wisely with the open house that's coming up in April, and I think if there's a need to go for another bond at any point, it'd be less of an uphill battle because we're gonna continue telling them what their money is going for. And lastly, I think, and we'll talk about this a lot later too, is career technical education, such an opportunity, the ITech Building, the Health Professions Building, encouraging new enrollment, showing that there are new opportunities here at LCC for these students. And lastly, one thing that I think is such a unique part of LCC is the flight school. For the first time in history, pilot supply has dipped below demand, and we've never seen that, right? With mandatory retirements at 65, there's gonna be a lot of pilots retiring, and we have a flight school right here so we can help fill that, fill that gap moving forward.
Hi there, Jesse. My name's Steve Mattel. I've been on the board for three and a half years, and I represent South Eugene. And I got question three. All right, the majority of students at LCC recently shifted from being mostly transfer-seeking students to a majority of students now pursuing degrees in career technical education. What do you think Lane Community College's role should be in meeting the community's workforce development needs?
Yeah, as I mentioned, career technical education is something that I see as a huge opportunity. Lane Community College should be the biggest if, one of the biggest, if not the biggest, provider of workforce development in Lane County. It's such a unique opportunity to provide that, and we need so many things, so many skilled workers in this community. We need more health professionals. That's no shock to anybody here. We need more people to build houses. We have a housing shortage in this community. And so we can train folks to be the skilled workforce that we need in this community. We can continue to talk to businesses and see exactly what they need and ensure that the curriculum matches the needs of today and tomorrow and not yesterday. Those are big things that we can do as a institution. Another thing that I have seen at my alma mater that I would love to see LCC participate in is the National Coalition of Certificate Centers. They do a national signing day, similar to high school athletes signing on to go to their next institution, right? And this is an opportunity for folks who are going to go into the trades to have a moment of fame, to sign on and say, I'm going to go and practice this. There's dozens of institutions across the country that do this, and I think it's such a great opportunity to get some press and show the citizens of Lane County what we're doing here at LCC and encourage more folks to join us. So I think that is such an opportunity with career technical education, and LCC should continue to be at the forefront of that in Lane County.
I'm sitting here listening and forgot that I have number four.
Okay.
I'm Julie Weisman, and I'm with three in Springfield. Been on the board for six months.
Congrats.
Diversity, equity, and inclusion is an important pillar of LCC's mission. What is your experience working on these issues? How do you see DEI initiatives and efforts working in supporting the success of LCC students?
Thank you, Julie. You know, I think diversity is a strength, full stop. Diversity is a strength of any institution. You know, no students, it's not, it's not just the students either, it's the staff on this campus as well, I think, that need to make sure that everyone, we, our staff and our faculty and our students should look like each other. We should have diversity, equity, and inclusion all across this campus. I think it's become a tactic, to use that term, but I do think at the meat and potatoes of diversity, equity, and inclusion, it just means, let's lift everyone up. So that's where I'm at. I also want to make sure that we're not treating diversity, equity, and inclusion as box checkers. I was a Latino Brown kid in North Idaho. If you know the demographics of Idaho, you can know that I kind of stuck out, right? People ask me to do a lot of things, give speeches, serve on boards, speak on behalf of an entire population, right? People of color are not monoliths. They all have stories, they have experiences, and they should be able to tell them in an open conversation and be a part of, be a part of the conversation. I think that, you know, I think we're all better off being around people who think differently than us, who speak differently than us, who have a different race or ethnicity than us. I think we all grow together. One of my, my first bumper stickers I ever had was, when we all, we all do better when we all do better. And I think that's such a key piece of this here. And I think another thing that I saw, obviously preparing for today, was that the president's welcome letter is now in Spanish as well on the website, and I think these are all great initiatives to continue pushing forward and bring us to a point where this institution looks like who we serve.
Thank you.
Hey, Jesse, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Lane County and the City of Eugene have climate action plans, and LCC was a stakeholder in developing these plans. How can community colleges lead in modeling sustainable practices and training the next generation of clean energy workers?
Thanks, Kevin, I appreciate that. I think just the same as career technical education, putting, putting our money where our mouth is, right? Leaning in, putting our heads down and getting to work. I think that all the decisions we make as a board should have the community action plan in mind. The classes we offer should incorporate the community or the climate action plan and have students thinking in that realm of how are the decisions we're making, the things we're doing, the courses we're taking, how do they fit into a climate action plan, right? I also, you know, know that LCC is striving to be carbon neutral by 2050, right? I think that's a great goal, but it's no shock to us, you know, living through these once-in-a-generation ice storms, twice, the fires that are continuing to rage here in Oregon, that the clock is ticking. And 2050, I think, is a great goal, but why not try? Try to be a little bit more, right? If that's not possible, then, you know, we at least tried, you know, to turn over every stone we can to try and be more ambitious and expedite that as much as possible. I think integrating sustainability into operations and continuing to do that, right? That's obviously part of the plan. Offering specialized clean energy training programs, more hands-on learning with that career technical education, partnering with local industries and making sure that we are promoting awareness and job pathways in this field of career technical education. And I think when we tailor the curriculum here about the community or climate action plan, I really love community action plans, apparently. You know, we need to understand what we have here, what is at our disposal. Sun is not one of them. We are not Arizona, right? We may have some more wind, we can capture more water, we can do geothermal, we can do different things here that I think should be on top of mind, and I think that is how we can, can work through that.
Thank you.
Hi, Jesse. Hola, como le va?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you here. Thank you. Represent Western Lane, and I'm talking to you from Florence. Number six says, what would be your top three priorities if you served at the LCC board?
Thank you, Denise. Great question. Obviously, as I mentioned at the top, and it's a part of the strategic plan, obviously, is financial stability and sustainability. I think that is number one priority of the institution, continuing to support a capital campaign that is an opportunity, an avenue for more funding of the university to provide stability, right? As I mentioned, that deficit, working with the legislators, ensuring that there is still funding and prioritization of institutions like LCC and getting our fair share of that. I also think, as I mentioned, understanding the community support of LCC, if and when there needs to be another bond campaign. That's part of the part of the process. And I'll tell you what, I've never met a bond campaign I didn't like. I love a good bond campaign. I've worked on campaigns since I was 15, and bond campaigns are so great because there's no party attached to them, and people are able to rally around education, and I think those are fantastic. So there's my, my, one of my treasures of my time is bond campaigns. I also think, you know, as you mentioned, it was such a prominent question here today is continuing to provide a trained and skilled workforce for Lane County and, you know, graduate students that are ready to enter the workforce on day one or, you know, after they've taken a couple of naps and maybe go on a vacation or something, but get a workforce that's ready to go and continue to work on that. I also think continuing high school road shows, going to these high schools, telling students that, you know what, we've been kind of forced into four-year degrees. When I was in high school, that's kind of what we were told were our options, were four-year degrees, and that was really it. That's starting to change, and I think we should be at the forefront of making that change, right? Continuing to go to these high schools and saying, a two-year degree is something you can get, you can come and get a certificate, you can get an applied bachelor degree here at Lane Community College, and continuing to show them that it's right here in their backyard, too. And then, lastly, I think, continuing that trend of enrollment and pushing for becoming Hispanic-serving institution, I think, is another big one. And if I could have the, if I could take privilege and say three and a half, I think getting a baseball stadium that is modern, modernized and revived. I am, I'm from a baseball family. My grandpa used to coach Little League World Series teams, and baseball's a part.
Hello, conference room.
Kevin, is there weather in Eugene? Are you having bad weather?
No, I'm in Tucson, and, and there's no bad weather here.
Okay. Well, we had a lot of strong winds and a lot of rain.
I can answer that. I haven't heard any strong winds around us, but I'm not, I also don't live quite near college, so.
Frankie? You're on, you're unmuted. Okay. Apologies. How long ago did we lose you, Kevin and Denise?
Jesse was done with question six, and he needed to be asked question seven.
Got it. I'm more than happy to repeat.
Yeah, apologies. Do you mind repeating your response to question seven, just so they have it?
Excellent. All right. And as soon as Brett resets the clock.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent. If selected by the board, do you plan to run for reelection to this position in 2025?
Yes, 100%, as I mentioned, right? You can't get everything done in five months, so I would be honored to to run again, and that is why I'm here today, is because I want to serve on this board. I don't, I don't want to do it for five months, I want to do it for longer than that.
Okay. You have a few minutes left. Is there anything else you would like to share before your time's up?
I just appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for, again, for taking our time of year. What are we, Wednesday night here? So I appreciate it very much. Pleasure to meet all you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take about two, three minutes, let folks jot down any final notes they have, and then
Dan's the next one, right?
Yep. Looks like we're all set to have the next person come.
Just got it.
My iPad will do, I'm not able to do, but it doesn't have the blank blank, it has something else, and it moves, and I wish it had a tablet.
Good evening.
Hi, Dan Isaacson. Thank you for coming in tonight. We are going to have, we have seven questions in total. We're going to do a round robin, so we'll do the first four here and then two online, and then back to Austin for the last question. We have 20 minutes in total, so you got about three minutes each for each question. The last question only just take a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, we will get right into it.
Fantastic. Hello, Austin Fulniggy, representing East Lane County. Why are you interested in serving on the LCC Board of Education? And what personal, professional, and volunteer experience do you have that prepared you for a role on the LCC board?
Well, I want to serve LCC because LCC served me. I graduated from a very small town in Southern Oregon on a Saturday morning, and I, by Monday morning, I was enrolled here at LCC. I experienced my education in a way that was simply unimaginable at any other institution or any other state. Since I left LCC, wherever the road took me, I always knew that it started here. The road that shaped me is also the road that prepared me for this role. Attending a community college, this particular community college, prepared me to understand this institution's promise. Teaching adults returning to education for the first time in many years after in the workforce prepared me to understand the complexities and the challenges our community has using LCC to expand their skills. Founding several companies, including at the time the nation's largest drone photography company, prepared me to see the intersection of innovation and business. Serving our community as one of your planning commissioners has prepared me to make decisions in the best interest of the public and then being accountable to them for it. And after losing my best friend to suicide, prepared me for a lifelong pursuit to find the causes of mental illness, to step into people's grief and understand their navigation in using a North Star to navigate that horrible experience. What's interesting about this particular board seat is it's an at-large, at-large position. And as Mr. Al Tucker will tell you, that means that there needs to be a little bit of Oak Ridge and Lowell and Florence in this position, not just simply Eugene and Springfield. There needs to be an understanding of the challenges, the opportunities, the culture of all of our county's citizens. I have that understanding. As I said, I come from a very small town. My graduating class had five people in it. I am very familiar with the idea that, well, your next-door neighbor knows a lot what goes on inside your house in a small town. But let me give you an example of some experience and how it led to actual changes. The suicide rate here in Lane County is eight, four times greater than 84% of the counties in the country. And when COVID began, everyone in the mental health community locally got to work and braced for the worst. As co-chair of the Suicide Prevention Coalition in Lane County, we got to work training over 900 people throughout Lane County to act as a neighborhood mental health, neighborhood watch. Aside from the usual suspects like social workers and teachers and healthcare providers, we trained cab drivers, construction workers, and bank tellers who saw regular business clients coming in. We focus on every city, every rural area of Lane County because it's the baristas who serve coffee in the morning and the bartenders who serve beer at night that know their communities more than anybody else. That requires boots on the ground, active listening, and relationship building. As a result, we mirror the rest of the country, finally seeing a decrease in suicide here in Lane County for the first time in 20 years.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Next question. One of the board's responsibilities is to plan for the future of the college. What are the biggest challenges facing LCC and how would you try to solve them? What do you believe are the major opportunities?
Planning for the future of LCC involves navigating both persistent challenges and transformative opportunities. The most significant challenge isn't one that we will ever fully be able to to address, but we have to continually be focused on it, and that is maintaining alignment between what the business community needs and what we offer. This includes ensuring that we are preparing students with the skills that are relevant to an ever-changing job market while maintaining a cost structure that makes education accessible and competitive. To tackle this, we must remain adaptable, inquisitive, and open to innovative approaches, balancing forward-thinking strategies with fiscal responsibility. While we explore new initiatives, we must always be on guard against overextending our resources or pursuing fleeting trends that do not align with our long-term mission. The public's trust is a precious one, and we must handle it with care. On the other hand, our greatest opportunities stem from our ability to adapt and evolve. By responding thoughtfully to the changing needs of our community, we can solidify LCC's identity as a place where dreams are nurtured, second chances are given, and futures are forged. I want my son to enroll in an LCC unimaginable and unrecognizable to the one that I did, but still be the launching pad for their dreams. The challenges and opportunities facing LCC are two sides of the same coin. The ongoing work of bridging the gap between our workforce needs and our educational offerings will define the college's role and our community's growth. By remaining adaptable and intentional, LCC can not only overcome obstacles but be also leveraged against them as opportunities to innovate and to lead. The question is not simply just to solve problems, but about positioning ourselves to thrive amidst change, turning challenges into stepping stones for the next generation of students and the communities that we serve.
Hi, Dan. My name is Steve Mattel. I'm been on the board for three and a half years and serve the South Eugene area. I've got question three. The majority of students at LCC recently shifted from being mostly transfer-seeking students to a majority of students now pursuing degrees in career technical education. Why do you think Lane Community College's role should be, excuse me, what do you think Lane Community College's role should be in meeting the community's workforce development needs?
Well, there are those that say that a college education is diminishing and that there's no guarantee of success by getting one. But let me tell you something, that the value of a college education is not diminishing, it's evolving, and we have to evolve with it. Students look to us to provide something marketable, valuable. That means that we need to offer not simply generic CTE classes, but always examining how each class compares with the needs of our community. Are the techniques, technology, and training here more valuable than what students can get on the street or with an employer? Our role is to lead in that effort. I think we should be continually looking locally for our business and labor partners, but thinking globally in terms of what our economy will be demanding from our working families, always with an eye on what is within our capabilities as an institution. I count many friends within our local building trade unions, including the former head of the Lane County Central Labor Council, a member of this board previously, who have mentored me and continue to inspire me with their unwavering commitment to workforce development. Their guidance has shown me that the invaluable role that unions play in shaping career pathways and sustaining strong communities. A conversation about technical education that excludes that insight, guidance, and expertise that our local trade unions has is a missed opportunity. By forging stronger partnerships between LCC's education program and union apprenticeships, we can create a seamless pipeline that delivers skilled workers to meet our regional needs while building sustainable family wage center, career centers for our community members. I recognize that our resources come from a collective instrument, our local community, our students, our state and federal workers. Over the past 20 years, I've called, I've cultivated strong, trusted relationships with our local elected delegation. Leveraging their collective influence is not just an opportunity, it's a responsibility. We must advocate with purpose and precision to ensure that the next generation of tools and resources that LCC needs and deserves is here. As a small business owner who hires from this community, I have seen firsthand the growing need for talented, skilled workers who are ready to contribute on day one. Lane Community College plays a critical role in meeting that need by equipping students with the technical skills and certification that industries demand. In my experience, when employees are well-trained and job-ready, they not only help businesses thrive, but they also position themselves for higher wages and more career stability, enabling them to support their families more effectively. By aligning its career technical education programs with the realities of the local job market, LCC has the power to elevate the community as a whole, creating opportunities both for workers and employers at the same time.
Hi, I'm Julie Weisman. I've been on the board for six months. I have number four question. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is an important pillar of LCC's mission. What is your experience working on these issues? And how do you see DEI initiatives and efforts supporting the success of LCC students?
Well, thank you for that question. You know, when I came here to meet with Dr. Bolger last week, I was reminded that we're a community college that sits on top of a mountain. You got to climb it to get here. We have to work to make sure that that is just a simple geographic term rather than an analogy for access by what we offer to some of our students in our community. The real tragedy of abject poverty and exclusion is that it breaks the connection between effort and reward, and life becomes apparently arbitrary and brutal. We have to know where we can make a difference and then concentrate our efforts there. If you take any community across the country, you will find that intelligence and ability, aspiration are all evenly distributed across a society, but organization investment and opportunity are not. My work at the National Alliance of Mental Illness, Lane County Mental Health Advisory Committee, and the Trauma Intervention Project rests solidly within the DEI lens. Those affected by mental illness, especially in underserved and marginalized communities, whether short-term or chronic, often places them in a world of disadvantage. The stigma drives the silence. Fundamentally, each of these organizations that I help lead have a common thread. What we do is to show that if you work with other people, you can make a difference, and therefore, because you can, you should. Here's the differences that we made. At NAMI Lane County, we created a culturally responsive, trauma-informed support and education, specifically the NAMI Family-to-Family, Peer-to-Peer, and NAMI Basics Program. These initiatives focus on educating family members, caregivers, and individuals with lived experience to reduce the stigma and foster an understanding of mental health conditions. By helping participants navigate the mental health system, which is arduous, these programs empower people to advocate for themselves and their loved ones. As a former college educator, I know that our student's success is tethered to not only our instructors, but our institutions' understanding of the challenges they face to even arrive at the starting line that other students enjoy. We can support our students here by looking at increased financial support, removing barriers to enrollment, having a staff that mirrors the communities we're seeking, offering non-academic assistance like partnering with our nonprofit community on support that they can lean on to be successful. I've shared the lives of those seeking the promise that LCC offers. I've stepped into their grief and their unmoored moments. I've taken that 2:00 AM phone call, I've stood on dimly lit street corners in the middle of the night. What I found were people who dreamed just as big a dream as anybody else. Theirs is just a larger mountain to climb to get it. I know from my work that too much talent is trapped in exclusion, and we have to be actively prepared to defend our programs against national policy shifts. But while other institutions look to roll back DEI in their community, they do so with the full knowledge that they are denying their community its full potential and making LCC that much more attractive.
Chair Mulholland, how we doing on time?
We have eight and a half minutes, plenty of time.
Great. Hi, Dan. Kevin Al Tucker here. I'm one of the two at-large positions. Lane County and the city of Eugene have climate action plans, and LCC was a stakeholder in developing these plans. How can community colleges lead in modeling sustainable practices and training the next generation of clean energy workers?
Well, thank you for asking that question. I deeply value the range, the expertise that this particular board brings. Mr. Mattel, your work with the U of O Sustainability Program offers us not only practical insight but also proven ideas that might be tailored to LCC's unique characteristics. Effective leadership involves not just innovation, but thoughtful awareness of the successful initiatives that are happening elsewhere, learning from them, and applying those lessons in interesting and meaningful ways. I had the privilege of working on Eugene's Climate Action Plan 2.0 as one of your Eugene planning commissioners, most recently setting Eugene's CFAC Parking Reform Code amendments, and those insights directly informed this vision. While we can lead by proving that greed is not a liability, community colleges like ours can showcase that sustainability isn't just ours can showcase that sustainability isn't just environmentally responsible, it's a sound investment in both the future of our planet and our economy. This requires us to be agile and proactive, adapting to the evolving needs of our workforce. When we build or renovate, we have the chance for setting a standard for affordable, sustainable construction with LEED-certified buildings. Every nail, every caulk line, every concrete block form becomes both a practical teaching tool for students and a living case study for our community. Here are two bold ways that we can lead by training the next generation of energy, clean energy workers. Oregon just passed the milestone of its 100,000th electric vehicle registered in our state. This achievement opens up an incredible opportunity for LCC-prepared students for careers in advanced battery systems and renewable energy storage. This kind of training would not only set our college apart, but directly align with one of the core goals of Eugene Climate Action Plan 2.0. Our housing is no questionably on the forefront of everyone's mind nowadays. The recently released Oregon Housing Needs Analysis done by the legislature projected that Eugene must add 27,000 new homes over the next two decades, an increase of 50% from the analysis that was done just a year ago. Every single local, state, federal leader is pouring resources into solving this housing crisis, and we need workers equipped to build energy-efficient homes that will reshape Eugene's future. LCC can be the training hub for this skilled workforce, and we have the experts who will rise to meet this challenge. By integrating sustainability and workforce development, LCC has the power to not only meet the needs of today's economy, but shape a better tomorrow for Lane County and our economy.
Thank you.
You Denise.
Hi.
Hi.
Is that an echo?
Yeah, why don't I go ahead and just read the question, Denise?
Yeah. It's doing echo.
Yeah, don't worry about it. I'll read it.
Got it.
Got it.
I hear him as well. He was in the meeting twice briefly, so maybe she needs to sign out and back in.
Yeah, it looks like she, one of those is, yeah, okay. Can you hear us Denise? Yes or no? Yes? Okay, thank you. What would be your top three priorities if you served on the LCC board?
I agree with you, Mr. Weisman, from your answer in July. This is a difficult question to answer, and I've read the strategic plan. I've reviewed over a year's worth of meeting amendments and video from your previous board meetings, and what I don't know through context or interpersonal communication that you've had, I'm willing to learn. Our students expect me to do my homework as well. First and foremost, I believe that ensuring the financial stability of LCC is the top priority for any board member. This will always be the lens by which I make decisions. I understand that the stability of this institution directly impacts the quality of the education and the services we provide, so I'll be tirelessly working to support the financial integrity of LCC. Second, mental health services remain a primary focus for me. I'm committed to expanding the mental health options available to both students and faculty. When I leave this board, I want LCC to be recognized not only for its academic excellence and sustainability, but also for its leadership in reducing stigma, offering trauma-informed care, and providing a steady stream of trained healthcare workers ready to meet our community's needs. Lastly, I'd like to get to know what our capabilities are, so I'll be spending a lot of time asking and learning from this body and our staff and asking the how questions. So much of my career has been answered and centered on two questions. What are we going to do, and how much money do we have to spend on it? I want to contribute by asking what is potentially a much more involved and much more important question. Besides what are we going to do and how much money are we going to spend on it? How are you going to do it? How are you going to maximize our effort and expand our impact so that our good intentions turn into real changes? How do you position yourselves in a changing economy? How do you figure out a way to give everyone who wants and has access to an education here the ability to do so? How can we use our facilities conversation to inform us on the president's goal of securing new and non-traditional funding streams? It's not just how much money you have and where are you going to spend it, it's how are you going to do it?
Excellent. And the last question. If selected by the board, do you plan to run for reelection in this position in 2025?
Yes, and my team is ready. Moreover, by my count, only two members of this board, including the president, was here when the strategy plan was put in place. So I would not be serving this board or the students or the faculty by adding to more turnover. I've helped lead campaigns for over 25 years in Lane County and Chicago, some with a much tighter timeline than this. I understand that the commitment and the dynamics that are involved, as well as the challenges to keep such a short election calendar. My roots run deep here, and I know that when I'm knocking on doors and seeking a full term, I will be doing it for this entire board.
Thank you. You have about two minutes left. If there's anything else you would like to add?
No, I'll save you guys the two minutes. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, the board will take about two, three minutes. Write down any final notes, and then we will invite in our final interviewee, which will be Bob Rupp. Looks like we're ready to invite in the final candidate. Oh, in the Zoom screens, yeah.
Give us our toast.
Yeah. Thanks for joining us tonight. My name is Zach Mulholland, and I'm the chair of the board. We're going to be doing a round robin of questions, so seven questions in total. You have 20 minutes, so about three minutes per question, and the final question will only take a minute.
Sure.
And so we'll just start here, and we'll go around. So we've got four here and two online, and we'll get through all seven questions.
Sounds great.
Hi there. Austin Fulner, you're representing East Lane County. Why are you interested in serving on the LCC Board of Education? And what are personal, professional, and volunteer experiences do you have that prepare you for a role on the LCC board?
Well, thank you, and thank you for the question. First of all, I do want to apologize. I'm coming off of a cold, so I have this kind of, I hope my voice holds out. So, thank you. When I was 19 years old, I started out attending Lane Community College. I grew up here locally. After that, over the next 10 years, I moved on and went to, got my bachelor's degree and then my master's degree. But I like to think that Lane set me up for success. But beyond that, beyond that role as a transfer portal, as I was working my way towards my bachelor's degree, I worked my way through college doing construction. So I had the opportunity to work with folks in all the trades. I was a plumber's helper in residential construction. I was an electrician's helper in hospital construction. So I saw the importance of career and technical education in creating great jobs for families, I mean, great jobs for people to support their families. When I retired, I had been the deputy director of the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. Prior to that, I spent four years as the director of the Office of Student Access and Completion. This is the organization that provides the Oregon Opportunity Grant, the Oregon Promise, and a variety of other financial aid programs for students. I later became the deputy director for Higher Education Coordinating Commission. This organization obviously funds, provides the budgets for community colleges, four-year, public four-years. We regulate private career schools. We work with the Department of Education on workforce development. So I had a broad, a broad experience in working with all those entities. Prior to that, I had about 20 years of local government finance experience. So I like to hope that I bring a wide variety of experience and a commitment to higher education that could be of use to the board and the community. Thank you.
Next question. One of the board's responsibilities is to plan for the future of the college. What are the biggest challenges facing LCC and how would you try to solve them? What do you believe are the major opportunities?
Well, I believe that some of the biggest challenges are the ongoing struggle between state funding and student tuition. Colleges, universities, they cost money, and it's a constant tension between how much the state's going to pay for and how much the student is going to be expected to pay for. So that will, that's been a problem, and will continue to be a problem in the future. I think finding and hanging on to great employees is a challenge, especially when you're having funding issues. It's retaining the folks that actually make the product that you want to sell, that education. And the third challenge, I think, is to stop, stopouts and dropouts and the kind of eroding perception of value of post-secondary education. Major opportunities, I think, Lane Community College has great community relations. Your 2020 bond kind of shows the respect that you have among the community. You're investing in your capital infrastructure, and that's very important to stay relevant and provide the opportunities that you need to, to meet the community's needs. And I think your innovative program design, the Applied Baccalaureate, I think was brilliant. And so I think those are some of the great opportunities, just to build on those.
I'm Steve Mattel. I've been on board three and a half years and serve the South Eugene area. And I've got question three. The majority of students at LCC recently shifted from being mostly transfer-seeking students to a majority of students now pursuing degrees in career technical education. What do you think Lane Community College's role should be in meeting the community's workforce development needs?
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Well, I believe that the community college in general, and Lane in particular, is much more closely tied to the community than a public four-year would be, for example. So I believe you have a great opportunity to not only serve the community that supports you, but serve the students that come here. So to be responsive to, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. I think that the college should be, rather than responsive, be proactive, look for those opportunities to work with the cities and the county. When new businesses are considering coming into the area, be there at the table and say, how can Lane help? How can we be involved in developing these workforce, the workforce? I know that Lane was involved when Sony came to town. I know they were involved when Hyundai Heineck Semiconductor came to town. But it was kind of at the back end rather than at the front end, and I'd like to see Lane be right there at the table at the beginning. Thank you.
Hi, Bob. I'm Julie Weisman. I have question number four. I've been on the board for six months. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is an important pillar of LCC's mission. What is your experience working on these issues? And how do you see the DEI initiatives and efforts supporting the success of LCC students?
Well, from my first professional job at Lane Community College, something like 40 years ago, I was involved in the first Lane, I'm sorry, Lane County, 40 years ago, I was involved in the first equity working group in the county. And ever since then, at every job I've worked at, I've been involved or chaired the DEI efforts. When I was at the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, I chaired a working group of DEI officers of community colleges. I was also involved in a working group of DEI officers from the public four-years, and I was the liaison with the 12 Oregon tribes, and I worked with them extensively throughout my career. I believe that I am a lot wiser than I was 40 years ago, and they say that the fool believes himself too wise, and the wise man knows he's a fool. So I know I have a lot yet to learn, so I hope to be a student going forward. I'm going to share something with, can I share, just hand something out really quickly? Yeah, of course. So I was feeling really good about my community. And then in 2020, this is a photo taken from my driveway in Springfield. This was a peaceful demonstration that was taking place in Springfield, and this fellow in the yellow shirt decided to show up and stand a post in the corner of my driveway. I don't know who he is or where he came from, but obviously, he was there wearing a mask and carrying an assault rifle, and it made me embarrassed of my neighbors. It was a difficult thing, and it helped me to realize that we have so far to go. We still have so far to go. So thank you for letting me share that. I did report that and share that with the police as well.
Hi, Bob. Thanks for coming tonight. Kevin Al Tucker here. I have one of the two at-large positions. Question number five. Lane County and the city of Eugene have climate action plans, and LCC was a stakeholder in developing these plans. How can community colleges lead in modeling sustainable practices and training the next generation of clean energy workers?
Well, I think the answer is in the question. I mean, when I look at the projects on your bond, clearly, sustainability is an integral component of that, and it's that kind of leading the way, being an example to your students and your community, you know, looking for opportunities to create your own climate scorecard and hold yourself accountable. You know, go for those LEED certifications on new constructions and hold yourself accountable. So in terms of how can you, I believe, what's the language? Model sustainable practices? It's exactly that. It's look for those opportunities and hold yourself accountable for meeting your goals. And training the next generation, I absolutely think it involves looking for opportunities in industries that are doing this work and saying, how can we be involved? How can we support our students going into this career field? What do you need from us? Making those connections and finding those opportunities to help your students have these successful careers.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob. Denise here. I represent Western Lane and zooming in from Florence. Question number six says, what would be your top three priorities if you served on the LCC board?
Sure, thank you. I think to be, to be brief, I would say remain innovative, remain relevant, and care for the fiscal long-term health of the college. By remaining innovative, I mean, look for those opportunities to be on the leading edge, whether it's your sustainability practices or your course offerings. And remain relevant, by that I mean, find ways to continue to show what you're doing to the community, show the value of what you're providing to the community and to the students, continue to build those relationships, both in the schools and in the local governments. and in the business community. And then fiscal health, long-term, I, this is not new to you. But look for ways to look out in the future and figure out how, try and figure out as best you can, that balance between investing for the future and remaining financially affordable for your students.
All right.
Thank you. If selected by the board, do you plan to run for reelection to this position in 2025?
I do.
You have a little bit of time left. Is there anything else you would like to add or share before you, before you leave?
I don't think so. I apologize a little bit. I'm still a little foggy from my cold, so my answers weren't as, as brilliant as I'd hoped they'd be, but I appreciate your forbearance on that. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Okay, with that, we will take a 10-minute recess until 8:10, and then we will come back and discuss.
Thank you so much, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you. Hey Denise, are you there?
Of our guests, so I guess they could all go home like I did.
Denise, if you hear us, you're muted. We don't see you, but you're also muted.
There she is.
Yeah, it looks like we're back with everyone. Denise, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so the way we're going to do this is we're going to ask everyone to name their first preference for who to select and why. And we'll do a circle and then if we have a consensus candidate off the first round, we'll stop there and nominate that person. And if not, we'll have you name your second choice preference and why, and then also name your third choice preference at that time. And so if we could actually start with our online folks and then we'll do the circle in the room. Kevin, do you want to start us off and then Denise?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Well, first off, let me say I was impressed with all four candidates. I appreciate the time that they spent preparing for their presentations and then actually coming to speak before the board. It's not an easy thing to do. And I think, you know, we saw some nerves a little bit from each of the four candidates and that's to be expected. I enjoyed hearing about each of the candidates. I learned a lot and I actually enjoyed learning about their experiences and their reasons for joining the board. Okay, my first preference, the person who has risen to the top of my list is Bob Brew. And just quickly, Bob has, in my mind, the right combination of experiences that this board needs. He's got higher education experience with the HECC Board, the Higher Education Coordinating Council. He has been an elected official with the City of Springfield City Council. He has financial experience with both the State of Oregon, City of Eugene, and the City of Springfield. And he is someone who I don't believe is seeking higher political office, which is, it's my, that's important to me. So Bob Brew, number one for me.
Thank you. Denise, can you go next first, please?
Yes, my number one is Jesse Maldonado. I too appreciated all the candidates taking their time. And, and clearly they were prepared and knew a great deal about LCC and numerous alumni, which is, was really fun to to hear about. I really appreciated his energy and focus, his ability to appreciate budgeting and bond campaigns, I thought was excellent. And I do think that our goal of Hispanic-serving institution is worthwhile and having faculty, staff, and board members who look like the community is also very important. That's my first choice.
Thank you. Julie and Steve, who wants to start on this end?
I don't want to go right now.
Okay.
Sure, I'll go. My first choice is also Bob. I, and my reasons are not really all that much different than those stated by Kevin. I, I just felt like, I guess there's a few of the things I'll add in addition to things that Kevin said. The experience, right, just really speaks for itself. It's it's really incredible, right? It's the budgeting experience, the higher end experience, the higher end experience in a range of, in a range of ways that his own direct experience as a student at LCC. Also, I just felt like he, you know, he spoke in ways that just kind of were more, I don't know, a little bit more intimate, a little bit more, a person I felt like was listening, was more, was going to be easier to collaborate with, share perspectives with. So, and I'm looking for that stuff as well. And I thought he did a really nice job.
Thank you. Austin?
Yeah, first off, I kind of approached this with the mentality of our LCC equity lens. I also approached this in regards to our future bond that we want to pursue come 2027. And also just what, you know, I see this board as a toolkit, like what are the, what's the tool? What's the, what's the tool in our toolkit that we're missing? And with that, Jesse is my number one. I agree with what Denise was saying in regards to HSI, especially with Hispanic-serving institutions. And making sure that we prioritize that as a strategic goal, which obviously is in part of our strategic plan. Incredible ideas around CTE programs. Professional development, reaching out to marginalized communities. Experience directly with a bond, pursuing a bond such as the Parks Bond. Experience with budgeting, experience in public office, and a variety of other different. And he mentioned students the most. And that was a really, like when I'm looking at my written notes, I see students in multiple areas. And out of all the candidates, that's where I saw that word the most.
I'll go last and then look back to you Julie, if you like. So I'm in agreement with Austin and Denise that my first preference would be Jesse Maldonado. I think that having a younger voice on the board would be very, very valuable. When I was reading Jesse's letter to the board, it was actually like I felt inspired by like his story as a second generation Mexican-American, you know, trying to do right by his family and, and the fact that he has, you know, at a very young age, was the youngest elected city councillor in the state of Idaho. And has come here and has hit the ground running and earned his MPA. I just, I think he's incredibly exciting candidate that I would be happy to support.
Well, as I mentioned in Monday's meeting, I don't believe that we, I don't support appointing a position at this time. I want to acknowledge all four candidates. I think we have four candidates that are actually very good. I think that our community will have four candidates to choose from, should all of them choose to run for this position. The at-large position or any one of the four, there's three other positions that will open in May, mine included. And so any one of these, well, one of them can run for mine, but their positions are all up for election. And I think that it's not our job to put someone in place for only a six-month term. This is, her position is up for reelection and triggering an election in May to finish out the remaining three years of that term. And six months into it, we don't know that any one of them, if we were to appoint somebody, would get elected. And being the six-month appointment to this board, I still don't know enough to feel like I am a fully rounded, fully capable and effective leader and board member. I, the learning curve has been so dramatic and so high that, so I'm at six months right now. And we're talking about putting someone on board who will not, whose term will be over in six months. If they get elected, great, but if they don't, it's over. And to be able to, they can't learn enough to be effective. And we don't need to do the business, we don't need to put someone on the board for three, six months to do the business of the college. And I don't believe that our community voted you all in for you to appoint someone for six months that they're going to then be voting on in May. And I think that this is something that needs to be left to the voters. And I do not think that we should be. So in that case, I can't participate in the first choice, second choice, or any of that, because I don't believe that we should be doing this at all. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've gone through our first round of preferences. It does not appear that anyone has majority support to get four votes at this moment in time. So I think what I'd like to ask us to do is to go through our second and third preferences in the same order as we did the first round. And so if you could speak to your top preference for second preference and then also name your third preference. We'll start with those online. Kevin?
You got the mute, Kevin?
Oh, you're muted, sorry.
Classic Zoom mistake. Sorry about that. I, I actually don't have a second or third choice. So Bob Brew is the candidate that I would support. And so he's my number one. I don't have a number two or three.
Denise?
Lose her?
It looks like it. She chat?
Oh, she's an attendee, so you need to allow her to be one of those to speak.
Oh, I see.
We're going to transfer you. I moved. What?
I did this.
Okay, let's see if we're back on.
I'm muted.
If you click unmute, do you see them?
I see. Let's see, start video, but. Yeah, but I can't see you guys on my computer. Everything fell to the bottom of my screen. Anyway, I can talk but, and hear, but I can't see anybody.
Denise, if you could.
There it goes. Thank you.
If you could say who your second preference is and why, and then also name your third preference.
Chair, you're speaking to me?
Yes, if you could name who your second preference is after your first choice.
Okay, my second preference is Dan Isaacson.
Okay.
I'll just, I know we're moving along, so, and I took up too much time with technology, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Sorry about all the tech stuff.
You're good. Steve, do you have a second preference?
Did you ask her to do her third?
She said she didn't want to for some reason.
I don't think she understood that we were doing too.
Okay, can you, do you have a preference for your third preference? Could you name that as well now, Denise?
I guess that would be Jim Arnold.
Thank you. Steve?
Still thinking, would you mind going to the others? They'd probably be influenced by that.
Awesome.
My second choice is a really close second, to be honest. Dan Isaacson, in so many different aspects of the background knowledge, the research done about not only like a year's worth of meeting minutes, strategic plan and so forth, and it showed in his answers. Overall, I really appreciate his, his focus on mental health. This is obviously a priority within our community and in the governor's budget and state budget. I also, and I share in the belief that we play a vital role in training the workforce for that. There was a lot of great things around workforce development in general. And I really appreciate the answers around that. I appreciate also the analogy of a mountain, that we're on the top of a mountain here and some really, there's some really good connections there of how we can remove barriers. I appreciated the answers, especially around students and staff. Background and education, background in working towards community development and with that, the possibility of a bond. Twenty-five years of experience, which was really incredible to see that, both in the written materials and in his background. And adaptability, especially during time periods like the pandemic.
You can go first. And then who's your number three opponents?
My number three is Jim. And not to lose anything from great, great work on the interview, Jim. I really appreciate that. At the same time, though, I would do want to implore my fellow board members who are either choosing not to make a choice or for their second and thirds. The elect, the, the people of this county deserve representation. And it's not up to us to take away that representation. They pay taxes into Lang Community College and they deserve representation here at this community college. And denying them that representation even during this time period is not right. I implore my board members to reconsider this because we believe in representational democracy. And we need to represent, even with the short timeframe, which we've seen this before, by the way, where we've appointed someone either at this community college or other community colleges. I know there's no legal requirement to do this. But again, I believe in, I believe in the voters to make their own choice at election day, but we have a really important responsibility to them now. And thank you, Jim, for your comments in the interview.
So, you know, frankly, I, oh, sir.
Can I ask a technical question?
Uh, yeah.
Chair. If we don't fill the position, right, by this process, and the board remains an even-numbered board, doesn't that affect the various voting, votings, I guess, you know, that will be occurring in this fiscal year and until election of several different seats?
In order for the board to operate and to approve motions, it requires four votes in the affirmative. And so only having six members on the board sets up the possibility that you would not be able to get four votes for either of two directions if there was a split vote and the college would not be able to move forward on any item that had a split vote.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So I, I also think that Dan Isaacson is the, the next best candidate. I think the willingness of him and Jesse to step up to the plate, not just for now, but for the longer term. I think one of the things this college needs is stability. I was very, very impressed with Dan's answers. And I think that his background, both as a business owner, as well as sitting on local boards like the Planning Commission, helping found both companies and nonprofit organizations that work directly with those experiencing mental health crisis. That at a time that we have an epidemic of loneliness in this country and we need to provide additional support services for students. I think having someone from that background would be very helpful. And my number three choice would be, also be Jim Arnold. I think that his experience with the Oregon University system, specifically working with articulation of transfer students, helping to create a seamless bridge between community colleges and our university system, that that was where he spent a long portion of his career. He did, he used written research papers on the topic of Oregon transfer students. And so that's why he's my number three. And with that, we're back to you, Steve.
Yeah, just reviewing my notes. Well, it's a tough call for me. But I think I am, again, find myself with Kevin. I am not, I don't think I can support any of the other three candidates at this point in time.
Okay. Well, with that, it appears that we're going to get stuck. It looks like for three of us, we have a one, two, and three. And for the rest of the board, they only have a number one that they're willing to support, which happens to be the number fourth choice for the rest of the board. So I don't really see a pathway forward to overcome that. Denise?
I might have missed something, but is trustee Julie willing to, I don't know what happens to the screen. I'm so sorry. If you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so my question just is, given the information that you shared about needing a four, a vote majority to pass the things that the board needs to pass on behalf of the college and moving forward, does that change anything for trustee Julie?
Would you like to respond?
Yeah, can you stop, stop hearing that? Because it's messing with Denise's screen.
Oh, thank you.
It doesn't change anything for me. I'm, I'm quite clear that we can do our business with four votes. We have six people on board. But I think this, this particular vote demonstrates that, another reason why I think this should be left to the voters. That we have four very good candidates from four very different experience levels, that three of the members on this committee supported three of the candidates, two of the members of the committee supported a different candidate. And so that just shows the, the kind of diversity that we have in our county. And this is an at-large position. And I think that the county should be choosing, not us. And yes, I understand representation and all of it, but this is a very short time to put somebody on a board that's going to be up for reelection. They have to announce and march and then do it. I know I have to. And Steve's seat's up, right? My seat is up and Austin's seat. Well, I'm sorry. Thought you said three and a half years. Sorry you were up. But so I think this is what we.
Just so you're clear, my seat is up.
Yeah, got it.
Well, I, I find it, I find it disappointing that frankly, that some board members feel that there's only one choice, when I think we had four people that all have great backgrounds. And so I'm a little bit disappointed that we can't move forward, that there's folks that aren't willing to go to their second or their third choice. And so I think I'll just ask for a a motion to postpone indefinitely.
If I, I've obviously asked and implored my fellow board members to reconsider. Board member Al Tucker, I've advised Chair Al Tucker. Can you explain a little bit more as to your reasoning why only one of these four individuals is your only choice? I would, I would love to hear that from you.
Sure. I mean, it's a little bit of a repeat of the support that I voiced previously. In my mind, we have one of the four candidates with the broadest and deepest and most extensive experience compared to the other three candidates. No one else has the array of experience that Bob Brew does. And that's the reason that he's my number one. And each of the other three candidates didn't rise to that level of experience, expertise that Bob Brew did.
Really want to, sorry.
I think Steve had his hand raised first.
Just want to check real quick before we, before somebody puts a motion up to postpone. But I get the, there are two of us who are supporting Bob as our number one. Zach, I, I get that Bob isn't your number four, but I have also heard you say that you would, you said the other night you'd be proud to, you know, work with any of the four. Given, given that, would you be willing in order to seat a seventh person to join us as a third person supporting Bob?
I don't think I can do that. You know, I have a one, two, and three choice. There's reasons for that. I personally think that, for example, Jim Arnold has just as much experience in the Oregon university system as Bob does, being the liaison between the Oregon university system and Oregon community colleges. And that provides him a special skill set with regards to transfer students that that Bob doesn't have, right? So for me, I think there's three candidates, all of which excite me more, that I think are going to stick around for longer. You know, for me, I, in, in May, I thought Bob was maybe the best candidate. But the fact that he was unwilling to step up at that time to commit to a full term to me showed that he didn't, he wasn't as committed to the institution as he needed to be. For what I, I think we need someone that's going to be around for 10 years or longer. I think this, this, this institution needs stability and someone that can learn and grow into the role and help this institution not just be great now, but be great in 10 years and 15 years. And so I see all three of the other candidates as being able to step into that role in a way that Bob wasn't willing to six months ago. And I'm not convinced as of tonight that that has changed significantly. So I don't, I don't feel like I can support Bob at this time above my first three choices. When we have three other amazingly qualified candidates and we have half the board that's unwilling to support anyone except for your number one. I don't think that's fair to the three of us that have, the three of us that think Jesse is the number one, or the three of us that think Dan's number two, or the three of us that think Jim's number three, to say, actually, no, the three of us, our fourth choice should actually be the one, because two of our members are being very obstinate and saying, no, only ours are the highway.
Way to order.
I apologize.
It's just a simple question.
So, so Paul, I, I don't think that would be fair to, to the other board members that think differently. I don't think it would be fair to the community who, where we think that the other three options are better, to say that, no, we're gonna, we're gonna cede to, you know, those that, that aren't, aren't willing to make a compromise.
Chair.
I'm ready to move.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
You make it?
Please do.
Well, I move to postpone this item indefinitely.
Second.
Is there discussion for postponement?
I guess there would, I mean, yeah, there's, there would be a discussion on the motion at hand.
Thank you.
Denise?
So my concern is that what we're seeing this evening will play out in important voting polit, in the important voting that the college needs in order to move forward. that the college needs in order to move forward. And that is not a good view. And not one that the community needs. And not one that supports hardworking administration and the college as a whole. So I don't support that we're postponing this indefinitely. That is not healthy. And I don't see that this division will, I, I'll put it the other way. I am concerned that this kind of division will play itself out, and we will have very difficult time in, in passing things that need to be passed for the operation of the college.
Awesome.
Yeah, you're right. The community does not deserve this in any way, shape, or form. This is our equity lens. It's a document that one of our former board members asked that we always put at the beginning of our agenda. So that we can review it and read it and consider it when making decisions about the populations that these decisions impact, the communities that it impacts. And and that involves not only policies, programs, practices, and decision and decision making. Only choosing one candidate and not considering the other three qualified candidates is exclusive, is exclusionary. Preventing an appointment of any kind is exclusionary. And does not follow the values of the equity lens. The community does not deserve this.
So we had a discussion, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Julie, I, I did. I think Julie might have been first though.
It's okay. I mean, I, I have no, I just want to, I just want to speak to, you know, our role. And the reason I even joined this board was to provide, in fact, I was really excited to put my experience as executive director, as a board chair of, I can't even count how many boards I've sat on. I even teach about board governance. My love of LCC and students and this whole institution and my passion for having that be, and that's why I joined this board, so I could put that skills to work. And I wasn't thinking about the politics of boards in this board in particular. I wasn't thinking about the, the split vote that people are concerned about. I was thinking about collaboration and governance. And boards, boards of education govern through policies. They govern through policies and the establishment of strategic goals and priorities that we then hand off to our one employee, the CEO and president of this institution. That's our job. Our job is not to get into the theories and how our academic systems work. Our job is not to figure out how to fix little ideas about transfer. That's not our job. Our job is to talk about it big time. We have staff and we have our president who brings that to us and then we discuss it. That we have candidates who don't have enough experience as board governing systems, but have a lot of institutional experience, can be as problematic as someone who has lots of experience and thinks that they know how it should all be done. And so I believe that representation and fairness and equity, and I just really don't like equity being thrown at me as a exclusionary, because I believe that what I'm actually advocating for is something that's very inclusive. So instead of having these four, five, six people on the board deciding who's going to represent this institution for six months, that we just decide that we do not need to do that, and we're going to put that onto the hands of the voters for the next four years, and maybe the 10 years and all of that. We do not have to fill this position. We are not mandated to do that. The voters did not ask us to do that. We're not trying to fix something. And so that's the only reason I'm pushing for this. We don't have to do this, and I don't believe that we should when we're so close to an election. So I just want to put that there. Thank you.
Awesome.
I've heard the term division on this board, heard several times. I've heard it multiple times in multiple board meetings where we are a divided board. I will say, though, some of the most divisive topics that we've had, we came together, we solved problems, and we came to solutions. One in particular was a special board meeting where we were talking about the student health clinic. And we left that board meeting, even though there was division there, with conversation, collaboration, and a path forward. And that path forward led to keeping the student health center. The division, so I, I actually question that fallacy of division. And I actually really do. Because when, because even though there's disagreements in mentalities, processes, how, how we, even the future of this institution, I've seen this board do some incredible work. And saying in absolute terms that, nope, this is my only candidate, or this, or I'm not going to choose at all, is not collaboration. I implore my fellow board members for collaboration.
Till the other night, when we discussed the process for tonight, we discussed this exact situation as well, right? Should we come to an impasse, whatever it might be, that we would resolve it with the motion that I just made?
Okay.
Hold a question?
I don't think that's necessary. I was about to. I'm disappointed. I would have really liked to have made a motion for, you know, one of these candidates, but it's time to vote. So could we do a roll call vote, please, Steve?
Yes, Kevin Alltucker?
Yes.
Denise Diamond?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the, what we're voting on?
The motion is to postpone this item indefinitely.
No.
Austin Fullnagy?
No.
Steve Mattel?
Yeah.
Zach Mulholland?
Nay.
Julie Weisman?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve Jesse Maldonado has an appointment to the LCC Board of Education.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Did you want to rule that that motion didn't pass?
Apologies. The motion fails as it failed to receive a four-vote majority. Any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, so you would please do a roll call vote.
Kevin Alltucker?
No.
Denise Diamond?
Yes.
Austin Fullnagy?
Yes.
Steve Mattel?
Nope.
Zach Mulholland?
Yes.
Julie Weisman?
Abstain.
The motion fails as it failed to receive a four-vote majority. I move that we appoint Dan Isaacson to fill these zone seven at large vacancy.
Point of order, Chair.
Yeah. Once we get through these, we'll go back to the original motion. Any discussion on, was there a second? Oh, second. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, so you please do a roll call vote, too.
Kevin Alltucker?
No.
Denise Diamond?
Yes.
Austin Fullnagy?
Yes.
Steve Mattel?
No.
Zach Mulholland?
Yes.
Julie Weisman?
The vote fails as it failed to receive a four-vote majority. I move that we appoint Jim Arnold to the zone seven at large vacancy.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, so you please call roll.
Kevin Alltucker?
No.
Denise Diamond?
Yes.
Austin Fullnagy?
Yes.
Steve Mattel?
No.
Zach Mulholland?
Yes.
Julie Weisman?
The motion, having failed to receive a four-vote majority, fails. I move that we postpone this item indefinitely. Is there a second?
You're not going to take a vote on the last candidate?
I'm sorry. I figured.
Well, I mean, you just went through the motions with three of them. Why would you deny?
Sure, why not? Why don't you go ahead and make that motion, Steve?
Sure. I move that we point, that we point Bob to the vacant seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, so you please call roll.
Kevin Alltucker?
Yes.
Denise Diamond?
No.
Austin Fullnagy?
Can I be skipped in the roll call vote and I'll come back to announce a vote?
Steve Mattel?
Yes.
Zach Mulholland?
No.
For the record, can we confirm if Julie is present? For the record, Julie is not present. For the purposes of collaboration, I vote yes.
The vote fails on a three to two vote. I move that we postpone this item indefinitely.
I think that's, but can we come, we've already done that once.
Are we not allowed to do that again?
Think we, I don't know, Brett?
So a motion to reconsider that vote would have to be made by, well, it would need two-thirds vote, but it would have to be made by the side that was in, when it's a tie three-three, there isn't a winning or a losing side.
So it would be the, the, since I voted, I voted against it the first time, and now I'm trying to bring it back.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, but then you're able to, to motion to reconsider.
It's my, I motion to reconsider the motion to postpone indefinitely. Is there a second?
Can I second? I don't know. Just second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, so you please call roll.
Kevin Alltucker?
Yes.
Denise Diamond?
Yes.
Austin Fullnagy?
No.
Steve Mattel?
Yes.
Zach Mulholland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. This mode, this item is indefinitely postponed.
May, may I indicate the reason for my no vote for the record?
Yes.
I ask, in the spirit of collaboration, my fellow board members, that we take a breather, but we need to reconsider an appointment process here. We cannot do this to our community.
It's just been postponed indefinitely, which means we can't.
Steve, if you could let Austin finish his statement and then we'll close the meeting. Are you done, Austin?
No, I'm not. Thank you, Chair. Again, I'm really saddened by, actually, no, no, I won't go there. For the sake of our community, I think we should highly, highly reconsider this. And for the record of why I put in a no vote is because I have faith and hope in that collaboration. That is the main point of this statement for my no vote. I implore my fellow board members that we reconsider this at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, that closed, that ends this item. Are there any board member questions and comments?
Please note on everyone's calendar of March 5th. Sorry. Please note on everyone's calendar on March 5th that we will be participating, that there's Lobby Day up in Salem. This is put together by Oregon Community College Association. The governor's budget came out and we are $50 million short of our legislative ask. And we will need not only collaboration of board members, faculty, classified professionals, and students to get the proper funding that we need for current service level and for the various things that we are trying to push for as community colleges. I also want to state that we should bring forward a resolution from the Oregon Community College Association that supports our legislative. I'm sorry. It brings forward our legislative items that we are supporting. Unity in this way by our community colleges is really critical and very important. And I ask that we bring that resolution forward at our next board meeting.
That item has been added to the consent agenda for January.
Fantastic. Thank you.
With that, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.